Good evening. This special meeting of the Board of Trustees being held Tuesday, August 31st. The meeting is being called to order and the time is 5:30. Everyone, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's proceed to item three. A Socorro ISD boundary adjustments for the new elementary and middle school campuses within Eastlake feeder pattern for the 2022-2023 and the 23-2023-24 school years. Our presenter is Ms. Maribel Macias.
President Morales, interim superintendent, Ms. Carmona, and members of the board. Today, I'm here to share with you proposed boundaries that we have. At this point, it's just they're truly in draft and based on the feedback that I received from you all, we go out to the community, we go out to faculty, staff, we go out to pretty much all stakeholders. I will be bringing back some more information to you all at a special board meeting if you'd like, or recommendation is for the November board meeting for you all to take action. So with this, this is our proposed boundaries at this time, again, completely in draft. Socorro ISD, what we do is we do strategic forecasting and planning. We always look at 10 years before, if we have more data, 15, 20 years before as far as enrollment projectants, and we also look in the future. We've had a professional study completed about five years ago, and with that, we're able to project the enrollment that's coming. We also have our GIS coordinator, Mr. Juan Jaime, and I think he's already in the back. He's gonna drive for me. He is brilliant. He knows where every single student lives, and he's able to project what patterns that we have within the district as far as movement, because our students are very fluid. They might start in the Socorro feeder pattern or Americas feeder pattern, and within their 12 years or 15 years of education, they might transition back. So all of those patterns is something that we look like whenever we are looking at our projections. I'm gonna de-mask. I think that's a little better. So with that, our goal is to always look at the safe, secure learning environment for students. Whenever our campuses get too big, whenever we add portables, portables are amazing modular buildings, but at some point, we outgrow our infrastructure. So we're always looking at what is the maximum infrastructure. We work with Mr. Ayington's team to ensure we don't over-stress an area, and at the point of when we have to start transitioning and looking at building new facilities. Socorro ISD is known as a fast-growing district. Of course, we're good stewards of our mighty pennies, because it's so important that we're able to show everybody that in the future, as we open up buildings, we're not gonna be closing any buildings anytime soon, that truly the need is there. So what we do is with boundary adjustments, we adjust our boundaries to make sure that buildings that are underutilized, which in Socorro ISD, there's very few, we actually give them a little bit more boost, attendance boost, and those that are overflowing, meaning students no longer fit in the classrooms, we're able to move to other areas. Maximizing the use of new existing facilities, as I mentioned, and the last piece of it, of course, is offering that top-notch educational environment for our students. The two campuses that I'm gonna speak about as far as with the boundaries, they all came to fruition because of BON 2017. Here in the Eastlake feeder pattern, we are projected to have a new elementary campus that'll open up in July of 2022. New elementary campus is right up here in the Star area, Mission Ridge area, between Mission Ridge and Payden. The area in orange, and I'll go right back, area here in orange is currently our Sushuk feeder pattern. The area in purple is currently our Mission Ridge feeder pattern, and our area in green is currently our Horizon Heights Attendance Zone feeder pattern. Our recommendation for the proposed boundary for the new elementary is right up here. We go from Payden, Emerald Park, Emerald Pass, right here is Eastlake, down to Rojas, we move right back up to Mission Ridge. So this is our proposed boundary for our new elementary school in the Eastlake feeder pattern. If you notice, one thing that we're gonna drive you through and do some area photos, all of this area right in here that is pink with yellow highlights, these are future growths. These are future subdivisions that we currently have a little bit of our students in, but if you notice, in this new elementary area, we have 1,064 single-family units projected to come in. Whenever we project based on the data that we've had, again, within the last 10 years, we could project .6 of a student to come in with every single-family home within 10 years. So that's the math that we do. Currently, we're projecting 54 students within the next three years, and those are the students that are already moved in there, and based on the growth and where these new subdivisions are as far as how far ahead they are, these are projected growth that we have coming into these areas. So if you notice, if we're at 1,064 single-family units, if we do .6, that's about 600 students, elementary, middle school, and high school coming in within the next 10 years. So we know that for the new elementary school, opening up July of 2022, we are projecting about 800 students. However, within 10 years, we know that about half of those 600 students are gonna be elementary students. So that's where we already have to start forecasting of what it's gonna look like 10 years in the future here in Socorro ISD. And what we do is whenever we propose a boundary, what we've done is within five years, we don't touch the same boundary within the five years. That way, once we go out and we get feedback from those parents, we assure them that within the next five years, that is gonna be their school. After five years, we have had to adjust mainly in the Pebble Hills area because of the fast growth, but all other boundaries, we have been pretty consistent in not touching them within five years. So moving forward, currently, Dr. Sushuk has about 1,300 students as of Friday. These are the numbers that I took as of Friday. So with the proposed boundary adjustment, that would take Sushuk down to about 835. Sushuk is also our dual-language academy, so they still have a fourth and a fifth grade to grow, so therefore, these 44 students that are coming in every year, about half of them are from out of district or out of this feeder pattern. So for the next two years, we assume that Sushuk, this 835, will grow to about 900 students with those in-district transfers due to the dual language. For Horizon Heights, they currently have 963 students. With a proposed boundary for Horizon Heights, what we did to alleviate it, because it did need to have some type of support, is what we did is right here in this, this is where Eastlake is, it's Emerald Pass, this right here is Eastlake and Emerald Park. There's 122 elementary students. Our recommendation is for them to transition to the new elementary. It is closer, so that's something that whenever we go out to Horizon Heights and we meet with the parents, those are conversations that we're gonna have as far as what that looks like in their transition. And the last area that we have is right down here, and if you notice, it's in green and then in purple, this area is also currently housed at Horizon Heights. Our recommendation is that these 47 students transition to Mission Ridge. This right here is Rojas, they're actually very close to Mission Ridge, walking distance. So our recommendation is for them to go to Mission Ridge, and then they would transition to the new middle school whenever it was their turn to go to middle school. And with that, that would put our Mission Ridge currently at 974. Currently, Mission Ridge helps us with our overflow. They're our number-one overflow site for Sushuk. So what we're projecting is those overflow students usually go back home. Once overflow, they have the opportunity to stay if they want, because sometimes they fall in love with that campus, so we won't take that away from them. However, when they have an opportunity to go back home, many of them do transition back, because that way, they start making their relationships and friendships with the students, but that's an option that our parents will have. So for Mission Ridge, our projected transition, if this boundary is approved, would be opening up next year, July of 2022, with about 843 students. And if you notice, here in the Mission Ridge area, we do still have that potential growth. We have 301 single-family units. We're gonna see about 50 students within the next three years. Those homes are already there, so it's just finishing up the growth. Any questions for Eastlake? Yes. For the elementary, and right now, we'll kind of go cruising virtually, so you can, you'll hear Juan Jaime in the back. Yes, sir.
Ms. Macias, my only concern by looking at the map would be the 122 right under the Paseo del Este.
Right here.
Yes, ma'am. Is that 122 just in the green area, or is that all-inclusive?
122 just in the green area.
Okay, and my only concern with that would be is right above the 122, that's where Eastlake is running across. So we would be taking those students from where they don't have to cross any, you know, major streets, any major roads, they don't encounter any major intersections when going to Horizon Heights, and well, I guess maybe with traffic, that's arguable as well, right? But shifting them over to the new school would then mean that they have to cross Eastlake, so...
Correct. And with these students, and of course, I didn't introduce Ms. Gutierrez, our transportation director, these students would have transportation going to the new elementary campus.
And so you also said that that was closer, so right now, they don't have transportation to Horizon Heights, because it's not, it's within the two-mile, but since they would be crossing now a major roadway, they would get transportation?
Yes, sir. I wanna double-check with my expert. She gave me the nod. Yes. And thank you for your feedback, and that's why we take it out to the community. Again, this is the first time that we propose it to anyone. After we receive that feedback, and you all will be receiving all the feedback that we get from our stakeholders, oftentimes, the boundaries that I proposed to you all today will possibly be adjusted by the time that I propose them for an actual board approval in November. And the reason that we want feedback is for all of those discussions to occur, and for parents to ask how they see or what it would look like. And again, the areas for Horizon Heights, this little area here near Mission Ridge, this area here that would go to the new school, and then right here, Emerald Park, Payden, is that divider between the old or huge Sushuk area and the new Sushuk area with the growth. Thank you. Let me go to the middle school, and then we'll take you on a little tour, so you could see the growth that we have projected coming in within the next five years. So for the Eastlake Middle School, Eastlake Middle School, our recommendation is for it to open July of 2023. Mr. Ayington has shared that in January of 2023, our building will be available for us to start transitioning in, and with that, it'll give us time for July of 2023, we'll officially open up the middle school. So the elementary will open up next year in July of 2022, and then the middle school will open up July of 2023. The recommended boundary adjustments, the area in orange-yellow right in here, this is our current Colonel John Enzer Middle School at 1,214 currently, and the area here in blue, purplish-blue, we have Desert Winds feeder pattern. In the Eastlake feeder pattern, we only have a K8, and we only have a middle school. What we have found is usually a viable, I guess, balance for feeder patterns is to have four to five elementaries, two middle schools, a K8, and of course, the high school. So if you notice, Eastlake, we're growing by leaps and bounds. The other areas that we're gonna be sharing with you all probably about February, March, if you all give me the opportunity, is for us to look at Americas, because Americas also only has a K8 at a middle school, so we need some support for the middle school area in the Americas feeder pattern. And in the Pebble Hills feeder pattern, we only have two middle schools. So there, we also need some room for some middle schoolers, and then that area already has four elementaries, but we're busting at the seams. In your packet, I actually gave you the enrollment after this first PowerPoint, the enrollment as of Friday, and you could see where those elementaries are very close to 1,000 in that Pebble Hills area. So for this area in Eastlake, for the middle schools, this is our projected boundary for the middle school. It'll run north of Payden, and it'll go all the way south, and then we'll have Mission Ridge, Eastlake, and I-10 as the other boundary area. So for the new middle school, our projected opening date, this is again, July of 2023, once we get closer, I do project that that's gonna be very close to 700. The numbers that Juan Jaime took, that is pretty much current numbers, rolling them up, but within a year and a half, based on the growth that we have, we truly believe that this is gonna be very close to 700 once we open up July of 2023. And of course, with this proposed boundary, that would put our middle school, Enzer Middle School, at about 831 students. If you notice, we still have a lot of future growth. We have 2,130 single-family units coming in for the new middle school proposed boundary, and we have 1,468 units coming in for Enzer. And of course, we have Desert Wind, which is right down here. Desert Wind is landlocked. We don't have any future growth or any subdivisions that are coming in. Currently, Desert Wind has 534 middle school students, a total of 827. We do have portables at Desert Wind. With our proposed boundary change, what that would do is we would have 317 middle schoolers. That is very comparable, if you look at the attendance sheet that I put on there or the enrollment, it's very comparable as far as middle school to a Bill Seibert, other K8s, Bill Seibert, Hambrick, and Ernesto Serna. The only other K8 that is not comparable, because it's so top-heavy, and I shared with you about Americas feeder pattern, is Druken. Druken has a very large number of middle schoolers, so that's something that we will share with you in March. Any questions for the proposed boundary for our middle school?
Ms. Macias?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, sorry, Dr. Morales.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No problem.
Okay, Ms. Macias, what is the capacity for the middle school of Desert Wind?
For Desert Wind, I'll look at that currently, I believe we have, I'll get that, I'll get back to you. Usually, what we look at, because we do have portables there, it was built as a K8, and I believe we were able to be 100% inside at 650, but don't quote me on that, I will get that information to you. Right now, we have 824, and we have, I think, a total of six portables, three doubles. Is that about right, Ms. Ayington? And I know I'm going off my brain. And those, so six times 25, so that's what, 150? So that's about right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, and I'll get that to you. That way, I'm not going off my brain. Mr. Juan, will you drive for me? So right here, we have our new Eastlake subdivision in this area. Juan, is this the elementary?
Yes, this is the site of the future combo school.
Perfect. And then if you could drive through this little area in the blue, this is what, we actually have students already transitioning in, and they're already, they're already moving in. So if you could zoom in a little bit, Juan, so we could show them that growth and how it's gonna look like once we open up that new elementary campus.
Correct. So most of the subdivisions that have already been filed are directly to the west of the new combo site. So once we click on the aerials, you'll be able to see that we actually do have homes already there. So we do have students from this area already living in this subdivision, these two subdivisions.
And our new combo school is right here. This is a direction for north, and we have the two areas, 159 lots, and as you see, they're already coming in, and 232 lots. These were actually filed in September of 2020. And right over here, again, north going over to my right, we have this area that Mr. Juan just filed, July of 2020, 205 lots coming in. This is Bob Hope, Mission Ridge.
And these are the future subdivisions, so they're currently still under review.
And with the subdivisions, as you see, some are already graded, so usually, with the graded subdivisions, we'll start seeing students within three to five years, more on the three-year side. Whenever you have areas that we still have, some of the vegetation, we start seeing students All right, keep going, Juan. I don't wanna bore you too much to death. You know, that this, all this stuff excites me, but I know you guys are ready to transition over. Just wanted to give you a good idea, birdside view, of the growth that we're having. So even though the projected boundaries that we have show numbers on there, know that every single year, every single month, if you could think about it, we're gonna have students moving in. Again, in this area, it's .6 of a student for every single-family home within the 10 years of existence or future existence. Right over here, we're gonna go ahead and show you a little bit of Sushuk. This is the area right here, Darrington, if you could show them those homes already coming in, Juan. And we love to see this, because whenever I present to you, even whenever we upgrade it for November, you're gonna see a little bit of a difference once we go from today to November, so you could see that we are the district of choice and students are coming our way. And what Mr. Jaime, Juan Jaime is doing is he's showing you pretty much the areas that we already have growth in, of course, homes coming in and students.
This one's an exception. We don't see any homes there, but they do have the streets already paved, and they're split in lots.
Thank you, Juan. If you could go down to the Horizon Heights area, so if you notice, there's still a lot of growth in every single one of our elementaries that we have in the Eastlake feeder pattern. So this is Horizon Heights, right here is a school that shall not be named. However, we do have, again, roads there, everything already paved, and homes are coming. That area is right next to the Walmart on Horizon. So that, we're looking about three to five years out before we start having students And this is the area right near Rojas, kinda headed west, right here is Eastlake High School, so all that area kind of in the back that right now, we really don't see, but eventually, we're gonna have a little thoroughfare behind there, and if you notice, they're already graded and ready for some homes to come in. Anything that I'm forgetting, Juan?
No.
And again, all this is right now currently zoned for Horizon Heights, and as I shared with you, Horizon Heights, we're at 756, but with these homes coming in, it's gonna be a couple of years before we're, they're right back at 963, which we are now. Usually, whenever we do boundary adjustments, we start pulling out, or Mr. Ayington's team starts pulling out some of the portables in the Horizon, in this Eastlake area, my recommendation is that we leave them be for at least three to five years, so we could truly see, or until we get another school. I know that we've already reserved, could you go to that plot, Juan? We've already reserved some land, and that land is currently in the Mission Ridge area. But if that comes to fruition, all that area that I didn't, that we didn't touch, all that growth, that would be the projected boundary at that time. And again, for those parents, that'll be the first time that we would, we would have the conversation with them of the boundary changes. So this is the potential future site right in here, so the recommendation is that that new school would help Mission Ridge, and it would help Horizon Heights. As you noticed, the new school for today that we're sharing, it really helped Sushuk. That was the major, major intent, and we were able to help Horizon Heights slightly. Thank you, Juan. I think they got an idea of all of our pictures of land and roads, and they're not rooftops like Mr. Ayington, but we show roads and land and dirt. Thank you. And with that, as far as the timeline, we started back August 11th, shared with Cabinet the proposal, met with campus principals, all campus principals that are impacted, they've seen the presentation, faculty and staff, I'll share with you the rollout that we have on the next slide, and of course, meeting with departments, because this, whenever we do boundary changes, it entails every single department within our district to make this happen efficiently and effectively. Community stakeholders, starting September 7th, we'll start having community meetings at each of these campuses, virtual and in person. And as far as board members, you all see it today, as far as a special board meeting. In November, I'll be going to different committees, that way, you all have an opportunity to see the feedback that we've started receiving, and giving me some more feedback if we need to make any adjustments based on what you're hearing. If you would like, you'll let Ms. Carmona know if you would like a board workshop, November 8th, and then if everything goes as planned, November 16th is when I will request your approval of what is presented. These are the meetings that we have scheduled, currently 18, we're looking at about 21 meetings where we go out to the community, we go out to faculty and staff, virtual and in-person. During those meetings, for faculty and staff, I present the boundaries to get their feedback, but then also human resources and of course, transportation there with us. So Ms. Angelica Herrera, could you come up and share with our, our board, your part of it?
Good evening, Mr. Morales, Ms. Carmona, and members of the board. So what I'm gonna kinda, just kinda overview is DK regulations, so we wanna make sure that all our teachers and the staff that will be affected because of the boundary adjustments are well-aware of what regulation and policies we're gonna follow, and mainly it's DK, the regulation. So any displaced teachers, just due to where our enrollment is gonna drop, and depending on the grade levels also, then we will let them know that first, we're gonna have a faculty meeting, and we will seek any volunteers. So if any of them would like to move to another campus, we take theirs into consideration. If there are no volunteers during these faculty meetings, then we do have to implement DK administrative regulation, so that that way, we can know which teachers are gonna be able to move. With that, of course, when we're seeking volunteers, they can either tell us they're at the faculty meeting, or they can do it privately to us, so that way, if they don't wanna say it in front of everybody, that's okay. We can always take their volunteer in private. So then DK regulation, we look at the district campus seniority and added value, and some of that will, might include, as far as added value, they do dyslexia support, coaching, destination imagination, GT coordinator, one act play, and so on and so forth. So we take those into consideration. It is not an all-inclusive list. But then, once we, we look at the staff roster, we'll meet with the principal and assistant superintendent, and of course, we'll start with last hire, which is, which would be the last, and we start looking at every single one of them. We see which, the principal will tell us how they add value, and if they don't, then when we start identifying them. And so any of the displaced teachers that are identified will be notified by us before the 22-23 school year. Of course, we will give them a reassignment letter, and we will let them know where they are going. And a lot of it, we would love to always put them where they would love to go, but the only thing is that if we don't have the vacancies, we need to place them elsewhere, okay? And we notify the principals of the receiving schools also, so that they know that these are just teachers that are displaced, and that we need those vacancies in order to place them. And just to, to also just kinda go back, we, of course, any employee who is on any sort of intervention plan cannot be displaced. So that's when we start going through that list, the staffing roster, that's, that's when we identify those, and of course, those stay at their school, and then we have to displace another one in their place. So any voluntary transfer reassignment displaced teachers, any other information? Of course, we ask for policy DK local and regulation. Personnel may be transferred from one campus to another if the transfer is in the best interest of the district. When the superintendent determines that a transfer is necessary, the superintendent or designee shall reassign a teacher displaced because of an enrollment shift or program change, and so this, in this case, it's the enrollment shift. When personnel reductions and organizational changes require the reassignment of an employer employees, the final decision on involuntary reassignments is to be made by the superintendent or the designee, so that the reassignment, of course, is always in the best interest of the district. An employee involuntarily reassigned retains campus seniority, though, or prior to the, to the transfer to the new assignment, so that goes with them. So usually, that kind of alleviates some of the stress. When a teacher is subject to involuntary reassignment in accordance with the provisions of this regulation, and the instructional program cannot be maintained... of this regulation and the instructional program cannot be maintained by existing campus staff, the principal may request that the teacher who adds value and is necessary to maintain the instructional program and our extracurricular activities not be involuntarily reassigned, and that's the added value part of it. With our staffing priority, of course, we've, once we're, um, displacing teachers, we, or staffing any of our campuses for the following school year, we first look at all the displaced teachers, they take priority, and then anyone, any of those that get on the transfer list and are requested by the principals, and then of course, those that interview and, um, are recommended for that position. So we try to, um, inform them as much as possible, so that they understand why and how it is, it is done. Does anybody have any questions?
How do you judge added value? Added value, is there a chart you have to, for the teacher?
So what we do, sir, is that we look at what they do on the campus, and there, that is one of the lists that we follow, it is on the regulation also, so if they're a dyslexic support, then that adds value. Um, we have coaching, if there are coaching for the campus, that adds value, um, destination imagination, so anything extra that they do for the campus, or they do something that is, um, if they're in a position that is highly, um, I guess, needed within the district, those, that's the other reason, that adds value, so it just kinda depends if that answers your question.
Is it like a scorecard, I mean, if you're, say, dyslexic support, uh, does that add X amount of points for them to stay on the campus, or as an added value chart, or is it just, um, all objective, just nothing?
So what we do, so one of the things that we first look at is when they were hired, so if it's a last hire and, let's say, they just got hired, gosh, um, we're doing this now, so let's say they just got hired yesterday, and we're displacing teachers, let's say, next week, but this person was hired, started at the school and, and whatnot, and let's just say it is, um, they become, uh, the avid coordinator, that's what they were hired for. So there, they may be at the bottom of the list as far as the staffing is concerned, as far as hiring dates, um, so they add value by being the avid coordinator, so then we go up to the next person. So there's not really a rubric that we follow, we look at what the last date of hire is, and then how they add value to the campus according to what else they do for the, for the school. Does that make sense? So for example, right now, one of our biggest, um, shortages in teachers are special education, well, no, that's not a very good example, because our spec teachers don't, don't really get, um, displaced, let me see, how about bilingual teachers? Or we have up there Win Academy teachers, those are very high in demand, they are very special teachers to us, so those would be teachers that we would not, um, displace, so let's say we hire a Win Academy teacher, and then they're, they're one that is, was hired just recently, or one of the last ones in, they add value by being, by being a Win Academy teacher, so we go on to the next one. And let's say the one right above them just got hired a week before them, or maybe on the same date, um, and they are a regular monolingual stu-, uh, teacher, I'm sorry, um, then they would be the one to be displaced rather than the, the Win teacher.
So, uh, a bilingual teacher can, can take a, a, a teacher who's been there, say, X amount of years, you know, a new bilingual teacher can come in, because she's bilingual, and the other teacher is just a normal teacher, regular, non, and replace her, even though she's been on the campus for X amount of years?
Only if they're at the, and, what I mean by the lower part of the list is that we always, um, when we're running the rosters, so we organize them by last, the, the ones with the highest number of years on the campus, or hire date are at the top, and then the bottom ones are the ones that had, were just hired recently. So we look at those first, so we're not really looking at the teachers that have been hired, uh, or have been at the campus for many years yet, we're looking at the ones where, that were, have been hired recently.
Just curious that, uh, somebody who's been on the campus for, say, ten years is gonna be replaced by somebody that, who just got hired, that dyslexic support or something, that's what I'm trying to figure out, how do you rate the difference between?
So it goes by added value, and, um, it might not be that we even get to somebody who has been there for ten years, um, they also have, we also go by campus seniority and by district seniority, those are the other things that add value to them, and that's up there too. We look at district and campus seniority, so we also look at that. So we might look at other people, we might even look at bilingual teachers if, if we need to reduce by that many, and if bilingual teacher just so happens to be one of the ones that we have to displace, and then it, it happens, or they might volunteer to be one to be displaced.
So there's not really a hierarchy on how you hold people there, it's just?
Not when it comes to, um, them volunteering, when it comes to displacing, yes, because remember, we look at hire date first, that's how we, we organize them, and then the higher date, we go by those, and that's when we move up, and then of course, the ones that are higher up on the list are the ones that have the most campus or district seniority, so those are the ones that we look at last.
Seniority does play a factor?
It does, yeah, it does, it does, yeah, it does, uh-huh, because they're at the top, yeah. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
And whenever we go out, everything, every time that we have a presentation as of today, we put it right here on our boundaries webpage for transparency, so if there's any modifications that are occurring, everything will be here, if you click on here on the street search, it'll also, you're able to put in an address, and it'll show you proposed boundaries depending on where we're at. So again, for transparency, everything that we're talking about today and all the way through November will be placed, I always forget to do this, will be placed on our, uh, proposed boundary adjustments website. Any questions? Thank you so much.
One question. The other, the other feeder patterns you're gonna address in March, you said, right?
If you give me till March, I'll have that ready for you, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm glad you said March instead of February.
Twenty-eight days.
At this time, are there any other questions, any discussion? Uh, since this is only a presentation, uh, no motion is, is needed, so we'll move over to the next, we'll go to the next item. Uh, next item is new business, item four A. Consider approval of workman's compensation insurance, RFP number E one-nine-zero-eight, comma, three years, extension, a three-year extension, uh, presenter, Mr. Sammy Garcia, and Mr. Mario Carmona. Proceed.
President Morales, interim superintendent, Ms. Carmona, members of the board, uh, agenda item four A, simply what we're asking for is, this solicitation was board approved August of twenty-eighteen, for a total of six-year, possible six-year contract, so we have completed our first initial three-year term, and the contract initially indicated that we had three additional one-year extensions. Um, Mr. Carmona and his team, um, discussions with the company, the company has offered the last three years to be, uh, extended at the same time, which would then, uh, uh, allow us to have a cost savings of forty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars if we extend the last three years at the same time. So again, there's, there's really no, no cha-, no change to the timeframe, the only thing is that we would take advantage of that cost savings if the board approves that we, uh, move forward with this, uh, three, one, three-year extension instead of a three, one-year extensions, you know, where we would renew every, every time. And Mr. Carmona's here, if you have any questions regarding the program as well.
So move. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paul Guerra, and a second by Mr. Eddie Mena slash Cynthia Nahara. To approve this item as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item, item four B. Consider approval of fresh fruit and vegetable program grant award. Our presenter, sorry, I've got. Ms. Shelley, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Good evening, President Morales, and interim superintendent, Ms. Carmona, and Board of Trustees, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, I'm Shelley Chenosky, I'm the director of Child Nutrition, um, and I'm super excited to present to you tonight because we have been awarded, Socorro and Child Nutrition has been awarded the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program Grants. Um, so this program is a program that is federally funded, and it, it, it provides fresh fruits and vegetables snack every day for our children, um, for our elementary students, and, um, it's a great program, it is designed to teach children about fresh fruits and vegetables, to educate them how it, uh, nourishes their body. Um, a lot of our kiddos don't, uh, try fresh fruits and vegetables, you know, they're, they're used to the canned fresh fruits and vegetables and things like that, um, so this really is a new way to introduce this produce in a raw way, um, we don't cook it or anything, we might serve, if, if we do, let's say, a vegetable that might help, uh, the student consume it, we might serve it with ranch dressing or something like that, but it's, it's really a way to introduce raw, fresh fruits and vegetables to our kiddos. Um, the exciting thing about this grant is that we haven't been awarded this grant in about five years, so, um, you have to qualify based on the free and reduced, uh, the economically, of the campus, and so Compeste and Escondrius Early Childhood have been awarded, and if you look on page eight of your packet, um, it'll show you the award amounts, so both schools have been awarded one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dol-, thirty-four dollars for the first allocation, which we must use by the end of September, so, and then the second allocation will come in at thirty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars for Compeste, and thirty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and change for Escondrius Early Childhood. So, um, so that's why we wanted to bring it to the special board meeting, because we wanna, we're hoping for your approval, so we can start using that money right away, so we can use all that allocation by the end of September. So I thank you for your time, and I'll entertain any questions.
President Morales, I got a question.
Wait, sir.
Uh, served, is it gonna be throughout the class or at actual lunch?
So it'll be after lunch, it'll be in their classroom, it will, great question, thank you, uh, it will include education while they're being served the fruit or vegetable, so the teacher will teach them about the origin of the produce, um, and, and how it nourishes our body, things like that, and then they'll try the fruit, it may even include the education pe- piece, may include an activity for the kiddos, and we're gonna do it two times a week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Any other questions? And administration respectfully asks your approval, thank you.
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion by Mr. Eddie Mena, and a second by Mr. Pablo Barera. Are there any further questions, discussion on this, at this time? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Our next item is fi-, item five, executive session, a meeting is to be closed to consider administrative recommendations for assistant superintendents of schools and assistant principals at Socorro High School under Texas Government Code Section five-five-one, point zero-seven-four. The time is six-thirteen? We are back in session. Item six A, or six, new business, A, consider approval of administrative recommendations, our presenter is Ms. Marta Carmona.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Lisa Estrada Batson to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant superintendent of schools.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paul Guerra, and a second by Ms., Mrs. Cynthia Nahara, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Uh, we have, I have three, one, two, three, uh, myself is four, and opposed?
Can we do a division? Who, who opposed?
Let's go back, opposed, we have two opposed, uh, the motion carries. The next posi-, no, you go ahead, I'm sorry.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends Mr. Adalberto Garcia to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant superintendent of schools.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paul Guerra, and a second by Ms. Cynthia Nahara, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Uh, once again, we have, uh, four in favor and two opposed, the motion carries.
Is it four and two, or it should be five and two?
Oh, listen, five, five and two, motion carries.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends Mr. Enrique Herrera to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant superintendent of schools.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Cynthia Nahara, and a second by Mr. Paul Guerra, uh, for approval, uh, all those, all those, uh, in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Once again, we have five in favor and two opposed, the motion carries. The next item is assistant principal, uh, for Socorro High School.
President Morales, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Miriam Esparta to assume the role and responsibilities as the new assistant principal at Socorro High School.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paul Guerra, and a second by Mr. Eddie Mena, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. If there is no further business for the board, the meeting is to be adjourned at six-fifty-five. Thank you.